Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Spokane Agenda Review Meeting for today. Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Just a note, Michael, go be with your wife, buddy, but I'm present, yeah.
Councilmembers Abone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Lambden.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. At this point, we'll turn over to -- we'll turn over to City Administrator Alex Scott.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmembers, nothing for the final agenda for October 20, so moving to the draft agenda for the 27th. First up, we have Jessica Stratton here on behalf of Matt Boston to talk about cost reimbursement for Spokane Regional Emergency Communications.
Good afternoon. Okay, so this SBO, so two contracts were approved by council earlier this year that involved Shrek, making -- having them make retroactive payments for using the city's CAD system and for occupying the space in the combined communications building. The payment was received in August. It covered three years, 2022 through 2024. So this SBO is meant to account for the monies received in excess of budget and to establish a budget for Recruit Academy number two. The last four academies have ran around $715,000 each, so we thought that was most appropriate with these monies. Any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thanks, Jessica. I guess my question, and please correct me if I'm just misremembering, but I thought the first version of this that we got showed something like a $300,000 allocation for the academy, and then when the new version came out, that number increased to the 600 or so amount.
That's correct. So there was confusion the first time we put in the SBO on a committee. We thought it -- what we had received was 2022 through 2025. So once we realized it was actually 2022 through 2024, it was that much more in excess of the 25 budget.
So that -- so just to confirm then, that basically it was just around the timing of -- or a misunderstanding of the timing that the dollars were coming in for?
Yes.
Okay. But I -- so where were we going to pay for the other half, then, of the academy if we were only going to put 300 from these dollars?
Right, we wouldn't have enough. So that's why we were concerned, and we took a second look at it and realized, oh, we -- this is actually for only three years instead of four. So we have this funding, and then I believe we have around $150,000 left over from Recruit Academy number one. So that's how we are achieving a right-sized budget. And the only reason Recruit Academy number one was lower than anticipated is because of a higher washout rate.
Right. Okay, all right, that's helpful. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't confused about something, because it just seemed like the numbers jumped and it wasn't clear why. So I appreciate that.
Sure.
Any other questions for Jessica? Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Moving next to Resolution 2025-0071, Jackson Dees.
Sorry, I wasn't quite expecting this. What resolution is this?
Yeah, Safe Speed signage.
Oh, yeah, Safe Streets signage. Great, yeah. I think we've got the final design from ONS for these, right?
Yes, they were ducks.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, should be in the packet. I don't think there's much more to say about that.
I think there was two. You could still get the Neighbor's Drive 25, and then the newer model version with the ducks and kids playing. Am I incorrect?
What I'd last heard is that they were going to have multiple options.
Yes.
But one of those options is not slow the flock down, right?
No, it's not the flock.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, it's -- some of the versions I saw are, "Slow down, no need to speed. Slow down, save lives, not seconds. Slow down, your neighbors, notice your speed."
Yeah.
Councilmember Abone.
I don't believe that's this item, though. I believe this item is the Safe Streets for All Fun Designating Priorities for selection of projects. So that's the amount of money for projects for the next year.
0071?
Is it? Oh, no, never mind. I'm wrong.
Cool. Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, next up, we have Amanda Beck here to brief Resolution 2025-0090.
This and the next resolution item are just setting the public hearing for December for both of the bid assessments. Were there any questions?
Is there any major pushback from either of the groups?
On the draft assessments? No, not at the moment. Any other questions?
Still time for a public comment during the hearing process, though.
Yes, there always is.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. Next to Chris Wright and Ordinance C-6752, public rules.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I've talked about this ordinance many times, so I think council is generally familiar with it. This was to set up a public rule-making process, identify when public rules are public rules, and then dictate how they're adopted. And the only thing I would say at this time is that I had a conversation with Treasury staff and Ms. Stratton by email this morning, and I also forgot about another provision that I wanted to amend to be consistent with this ordinance. So I am recommending at this time that we defer first reading of this to November 3, so that we have time to tackle any extra amendments that we may need to accommodate the administration and other needs. There is no rush on this ordinance as far as I'm concerned, and I'm all about having a thoughtful process on this one, because it is such a sweeping ordinance, so.
I move to defer Ordinance C-36752 until -- when was first reading you wanted?
November 3.
First reading on November 3.
Second. Councilmember Klitsky, second. All those in favor for deferral, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? That is deferred. Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart, to November 3.
All right, unless there was anything else on that item. Moving next to Ordinance C-36784, Tim Thompson and Spencer Gardner to talk about the Hilliard Subarea Plan. And then, Tim, you can go ahead and do C-36773.
Good afternoon, council members. Hilliard Plan has been before you a couple of times. We asked for a deferral. I think we finally have our game plan, but we are going to ask for another deferral. I'll try to sketch the process out here, and then maybe we can send out a follow-up email, just so that everybody's following along. We had noticed a hearing to be held next week. In the process, publishing the hearing, there was some question about whether we needed to adopt the plan by resolution or by ordinance. And what we ended up resolving is that we should adopt it by ordinance. There is a part of our code that indicates that it should be adopted by ordinance. The problem is that the schedule for adopting it by ordinance is actually going to push us past that November 27th, or sorry, October 27th hearing. So for tonight, we would ask that you defer the resolution until the 27th, which is the advertised date of the hearing. That's next week. At that time, we would recommend that an ordinance be considered in place of the resolution. Because the hearing is advertised for next week, we would suggest that you open the hearing, but then continue it to November 3, so that the ordinance that would be adopted in place of the resolution has time to go through the first reading and then the second reading and be adopted on the 3. Does that all make sense?
So you're wanting the Ordinance C-36784 to be deferred. First reading on what day?
So the resolution is what's on your agenda for tonight. So the resolution would be deferred. I think we also did request a suspension of the rules to put the ordinance on for first readings starting next week. So that's the two kind of competing things here. There's the resolution that's been in your queue for a while that we deferred to tonight. There's the ordinance that we're asking that you suspend your rules to put it on your agenda as a first reading item for next week. So the deferral would be -- tonight would be related to the resolution, to answer your question. Does that make sense?
It does. Spencer, what happens, Mr. Wright asked, and what happens to the resolution once it's supplanted by the ordinance? Does that just kind of go away?
I think that discussion is still happening, but as to whether or not the ordinance would just end up being deferred indefinitely, but I'm not sure.
That was my expectation, is that at the time that you hold the hearing, you can defer the resolution indefinitely. It kind of goes away, and the ordinance becomes the primary focus of the efforts.
I think there's still a conversation, you know, with legal exactly about how to do it, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Spencer?
What's the resolution number? I'm looking for it, and I don't see it on tonight's.
Yeah, it's under hearings.
Thank you. So you would want that deferred till November 3?
We would want the resolution deferred until the 27th, because that's when the advertised hearing is. Then you can open the hearing on the 27th. Since the ordinance can't be adopted till the 3, you could continue the hearing on the 27th. If there is any public testimony, you could take it. But then, at the hearing on the 27th, you could continue the hearing to the 3, take any further public testimony on the 3, and adopt the ordinance.
All right, so I'll make the motion to defer Hearing One, Resolution 2025-0080, till October 27.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? That is deferred. Thank you, Spencer.
Thank you. Then there was the other item about suspending the rules to add the ordinance as a first reading item on the agenda for the 27th. Is that coming?
They'll take that up when they get to Mr. Wright, yep.
Got it. Just wanted to make sure we didn't miss it.
That's on here. All right, and, Tim, did you want to come down and do code modernization or wait till later? So jumping ahead then to the first item for the draft agenda for November 3.
So thank you. I was here a couple months ago to talk to you, to brief you about the code amendment that we're looking to do over the next 12 to 14 months. When I was here last, we were in the RFP process. We have since selected a consulting firm. We've chosen Clarion and Associates out of Denver, and then they've partnered here locally with Kimley Horn, so we do have local presence as well. We chose Clarion because of their broad experience. They have over 30 years of experience in this very exact situation. They've done 250 or so code adoptions across the country, so they have broad national experience. So these two requests are first for the contract, and then the second is a special budget ordinance to allocate. We're asking for $425,000 out of the Development Services Enterprise Reserve funds to be encumbered for this particular project. About $368,000 is for the scope of the code rewrite itself, and then the additional funds, I think it's about $56,000, would be used for Task Five, which is included in the scope, which is just kind of a broad, if we, you know, run into any hiccups or if we need some additional studies to support the code amendment, that we have the funds to be able to do that and not have to come back and spend additional time, because we're already crunched for time on this one. So those are the two requests. Happy to answer any questions.
Tim, I thought that was a pretty hefty amount that's being requested for this. I know we've done some other code cleanup, and it was nowhere near this amount that was requested. Concerned.
Sure. This is a complete code overhaul, the complete Title 17 overhaul. That's the intent here, is basically we're going to start over from scratch. We'll look at what is still relevant and populate those particular ordinances that need to remain. So one thing that comes to mind is the airport overlay, for example. That's something that will probably remain. But as far as everything else, we're going to look at our use table. We're going to look at our land use and zoning classifications. We're going to look at all of our processes and procedures and identify where we can gain efficiencies. We're going to try to be very clear and concise, so that there's -- nothing's a mystery anymore. And then, we're going to really try to focus in on some of those design and development standards.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. I think this is great. One interest, and I've shared this with Spencer, but one interest I have is seeing our fencing code get updated and improved a bit, and so wondering what would be the best way to ensure that that's sort of on the radar throughout this process.
So I'll just take a note, make a note of that. I think, once the contract is approved and we can have a meeting with the consultant, we'll start to really formulate what our engagement looks like. But I would envision that we're going to interview city staff, members of the community, our developers, those that use the code, council members and plan commissioners, to really get a better understanding of what some of the challenges are that you've heard, and then try to address those. So I will -- I'll make a note of fencing code, and perhaps we can follow up at some point if you have some specific examples or concerns.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions for Tim? The none, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may, I'll just quickly add that, two quick things. Number one, we're very fortunate to have Tim helping to lead this work. He's done this at other jurisdictions and has actually been through this process and can attest to the positive impacts. And then the second thing is, the price tag took us back the first time we heard it, too, but ultimately, the more we learned about what this has the potential to do in terms of getting rid of bureaucratic red tape, making it easier to develop in our city, ultimately, it feels like it's going to be worth every penny.
Thanks.
All right, next up, Eldon Brown, and Eldon has three items. So go ahead and do the hearing, the briefing on the hearing on Vacation of the Alley Between Central Columbia, and then also your Ordinance C-35945, and also Vacation of Cedar Street.
Yeah, the first item is a vacation of the alley between Central and Columbia from Freya to Sycamore. This is up in the Hilliard area. This one falls under the non-user statute, whereby it has to be platted prior to March 11, 1904. On there, it was platted in 1889. Also has to be unopened for a period of five years after it was actually platted, as we can tell. That's true. And it also can't be annexed into a city within five years from when it was platted. It was annexed in 1907, so it was well after the five-year timeline. So it actually meets all the criteria for a no-cost vacation being done through the non-user statute. There is a, I think, a water service connection in that alley, which will have to be relocated out into Columbia, so that will be part of the conditions of the vacation. On there, it serves four mobile homes in there. And then we also would have, I think, easements set aside for Lumina Vista Comcast and TDS have facilities in the alley, so we'd reserve easements for those four utilities. There aren't real city utilities in that alley. So beyond that, looks like a good candidate for a vacation. It's totally an unimproved alley, so there's no closure work on either end of it. So be happy to answer any questions. Yeah.
What's it being vacated for?
Pardon me?
Who's requesting the vacation, and what's the purpose of the vacation?
Basically, they just want to consolidate property. All the property owners signed it, so it was 100% petition on both sides of it.
Okay.
So they just want to consolidate it for, basically, I think, at this point in time for probably security purposes, but it would also lend itself to future development of the property.
Is the property owned? Is all the property around owned by the same person or entity, or is it a bunch of different?
One side's pretty much owned, the north side, by one entity. The south side's got some different property owners on there.
All right.
But everybody did sign a petition to it, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? That's all we got there. So what was the other one you had there, Alex?
So that was the first one. Number two was Vacation of the North Half of Rosewood Avenue between the East Line of Helena Street. That's -- I've got a request to brief that here.
Yeah, that's an old vacation back from about eight years ago. I don't even think I have the map here for that one. But what's happened is, it's another one that qualifies through the non-user statute. It was done back in, I think, 2016. One of the criteria we had was to actually do closure work when you're on Pittsburgh Street. And when they finally came in, we just got that resolved within the last six months here, where they've actually come up with a plan as to how they want to tie into Pittsburgh Street with access into the development they're trying to do adjacent to that vacation. So that's the reason it's been sitting there for a period of time. The developer never moved ahead to actually do the closure work on the alley, even though it was done through the non-user statute. So we finally have that in hand. We've got the actual plan for that, and so they've moved ahead and satisfied the conditions from a nine-year-old street vacation to make that one happen. So that's what's going on with that one. They only did do half the right-of-way. I'll try to make sure I have the map. When you see it, they only did the north half of that right-of-way, so the south half of it's still there for about half a block. And there again, the south half was not interested in actually following through on the non-user statute, just the north half's the only one that presented the petition to us. But I'll show you the map when I actually have it the next time. I forgot to bring it today.
Thank you, Eldon.
And last but not least, was the request to brief hearing on continuation of the hearing for the Vacation of Cedar Street.
And I'm certainly going to the meeting. It's going to be set up on the 22nd, so we'll just continue on and see what comes out of that process and kind of go on from there.
Eldon, do you know the closing of the hearing date for that one?
Yes.
Just off the top of your head.
November 3, I think, was when we have a setup to conclude it. We continued the hearing until November 3, and then we have the neighborhood meeting, I think, set up for the 22nd at the West Central Community Center. I think that's the latest I know about it, anyway.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thanks, Eldon. Next up, Jessica Stratton again. I apologize for not having you stay here last time. Three more things from Jessica. Possible revenue sources for the 2026 budget hearing, Ordinance C-36772, and then request to brief the beginning hearing on the Midby Mod.
Yes, so it is budget adoption season. So the very first one is next Monday, October 27th. It's the hearing on possible revenue sources. This is the first of three council budget hearings for the public. At the revenue hearing, is what we call it, staff will make a presentation on property taxes, sales use tax, and utility tax, and then public comment. For the Ordinance C-36772, this is the annual ordinance that is needed to levy ad valorem property taxes. So this is just the council manic 1% increase. So that is what that is. So on November 3, council will be voting on that ordinance, because city charter says there's only a final reading on the property tax ordinance. And also, on Monday, November 3, will be the first of two planned city council budget hearings on whatever the public wants to talk about.
So on the hearing for the possible revenue sources for the 2026 budget, I was pretty shocked earlier today to hear that we only took a 9% administrative fee on the $8 million grant that we got, when we could be taking 15. I think that, for us, a good place to look would be on the grants that we're getting and making sure that we're taking the administrative cut that we could take. I think that's pretty low-hanging fruit for us, and so I don't know if there's a discussion we could have on that in the future. But I mean, 6% of 8 million, that's half a million dollars, you know, that we didn't take there that we could have. And so I think that should be something that we look at in the revenue sources.
Okay. So grants on a case-by-case basis, and they don't always impact the general fund. So that gets a little difficult. But yes, I agree. We should be taking all the indirects we can.
100%, yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions for Jessica?
I think so.
Did you need to cover the other two, Jessica, or are we good?
Oh, I did.
You covered them all? Okay, great, perfect. All right, then I think the last thing that I haven't covered yet is Ordinance C-36768. Adam McDaniel. I don't think Sarah Nuss is here.
Councilmembers, this is a proposed ordinance that establishes the required provisions for a local emergency management organization per state law. It removes some references to the city as a joint member of a local emergency management organization. Any questions?
What was -- did you say it removes us from?
Yeah, so we were originally a member of a joint local emergency management organization, but since 20, I guess, 2020, we've been working to create our own local emergency management, and that's what Sarah Nuss in that office does now.
I guess. What are the -- I'll connect with you.
Okay.
Thank you, Adam. All right, at this point, we're going to go over to Policy Advisor Mr. Wright for final agenda considerations, amendments, and deferrals. Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Council President. We've already disposed of the first item for tonight's agenda related to Resolution 2025-0080, the Hilliard 20250080, the Hilliard Subarea Plan. So moving to the draft agenda for, updated draft agenda for October 27th, we're requesting a motion to suspend council rules and amend without automatic deferral special budget ordinance C36771. This relates to the cost reimbursement from SREC.
Entertained a motion to suspend the rules?
We'll make a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of deferral on just special budget ordinance C36771.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Just a, yeah, quick thought here. I think Jacobi laid it out for us. I mean, we can just read the motions. I think that would help us as we go through.
It should be just one motion, the way Mr. Bird has articulated it, so.
For the entire ones under this updated draft?
Yes. Just for ordinance C36771, suspend the rules and amend the ordinance without the effect of deferral.
There is a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? The rules have been suspended. Entertain a motion?
All right, I will.
That should have been the all-one motion right there.
It was all, you wanted all one, so, okay. Any other commentary then on this one? Then again, all in favor?
Council President?
Oh, Councilmember Katcard, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Did we say that it was all-in-one? Because I heard just a motion to suspend the rules.
Councilmember Katcard, that was what I had said, but I was informed that it was all rolled up into one.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think I maybe voted yea under a different understanding, but it doesn't change the next vote, but I just think we should be clear going forward.
Okay, thank you. So just to be clear, there's a motion and a second.
To suspend the rule.
Suspend the rule. We've done that.
Adopt the amendment.
Adopt the amendment.
Without the effect of deferral.
Right. Now, all in favor of that?
Didn't we just vote on that?
Well, just because we had clarity from Councilmember Katcard, who didn't catch all of that as we were working our way through it, so.
Mr. Wright, I think we already voted on that and approved it, right?
Yeah.
We voted on a suspension. That was the way it was stated by the Council President. So just to be clear, that everybody knows that they are suspending the rules and adopting amendment without the effect of deferral. It would be best to articulate it that way.
So I'm going to make a motion, once again, to adopt the amendment without automatic deferral.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Councilmember Katcard, did you still have any other comment?
Nope, sorry, left my hand up.
Thank you. Then all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
Aye.
Abstentions? All right, that passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Next item is a bit more interesting in the sense that Councilmember Dylan will be requesting, I think, in one motion to suspend the council rules and add emergency ordinance C36774 relating to city council employees. And I do recommend that we take the suspension up separately from the amendment on this one. Because I do want to talk about the amendments, so.
So entertain a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved. Councilmember Bingle?
Can we say just for this item as opposed to just a blanket suspension?
For item number 36774.
And I would just like to say, I think it's really important, since we are working off of what Mr. Bird has put together for us, to keep any confusion from happening, reading the actual request that's here, because that's what I'm working off of. And so if we're not following this, then there will be confusion when we're voting on that. And so can I make that request? Everybody in council, can we just read the motions as written out here for us?
And I hear you, Councilmember Bingle, but I don't think Councilmember Katcard has the same thing in front of him, so I think that should be in consideration. Councilmember Katcard?
Yeah, no, I'm fine either way, frankly. I just, I just don't think we should be able to change a motion once the motion's been made and for the public, they don't have this piece of paper in front of them. So I just want to make sure that we're clear. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Dylan.
Yeah, so I'm just going to redo my motion. So request to suspend the rules for the purpose of just adding emergency ordinance C36774 relating to city council employees.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes, abstentions? The rules are suspended. Mr. Wright, do you want to walk us through this one?
Yes, Council, you have two proposed amendments in front of you, the Dylan amendment and the Katcard amendment. They both pertain to Section 8 of this ordinance, which is a section that discusses the legislative assistance. We had an interesting discussion before the meeting and I did send an email to you about 3:15 as to whether or not these amendments are compatible or not. And I had a conversation with Ms. Fister about this as well. And her answer was basically that if you pass the Dylan amendment first and then the Katcard amendment second, you can make them harmonize and it would be consistent. I still would prefer only one or the other be adopted, so.
Councilmember Dylan?
Yeah, I just want to clarify because there's been some confusion around this and I'll certainly own some of that myself. We know how Mondays can be. So just to kind of clarify, and I don't want to speak for Councilmember Katcard, but I think that his amendment retains the language that I had initially introduced with LA2s. And so I would be fine withdrawing my amendment. I think that his amendment accomplishes what I had wanted to. I think when the way it came across, just upon reading it, I think that I missed the piece where, from the original ordinance that was introduced, I was trying to reinstate the code. When his came through, all I saw was the new section and not that additional new piece of code, hence some of the confusion. So, yeah, I'm totally fine withdrawing my motion, but also just want to clarify this does only, both amendments only pertain to legislative assistance, not council president authority.
All right, Councilmember Bingle?
I will move to suspend the council rules and amend without automatic deferral just emergency ordinance C36774 to adopt the Katcard amendment.
All second.
It's been moved in the second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes?
Aye.
Abstentions? That's adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. I'll read this verbatim. Council President Wilkerson requests in one motion to suspend the council rules and add just ordinance C36784 adopting the Hilliard Subarea Plan for first reading on October 27, 2025 and final reading on November 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in the second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Wright?
No real changes for draft agenda for November 3rd. However, we have two special requests for council to consider. The first relates to the coming committee meetings for finance, administration and public safety and the second relates to budget amendments. So the first one, in order for council to to have a timely discussion about the budget, we're suggesting that the finance meeting be swapped with the public safety meeting. That way, when the administration presents the budget on November 3rd, it will be in front of the right committee. So there's a potential motion to suspend the rules to swap the October Finance and Administration Committee meeting with the November Public Safety Committee meeting and have the Finance Committee on November 3rd and to move the Public Safety Committee to October 27th.
Mr. Jacobi, you came, do you want to comment?
Yep, I just wanted to provide some context for why we're asking you to take action on it. Our rules do provide that the chairs of committees and council president can cancel our committee meetings, but it's unclear what happens when you're trying to do a special meeting on a day that isn't the Monday following at like 10 o'clock in the morning. So I know I'm being kind of nitpicky here, but I'm hoping that if you're amenable to the change, you take the action to suspend your rules to do so.
Any council commentary? Seeing none. All those in favor of the date change as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
I think we have a motion yet, do we?
I'll make.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules to swap the October FNA Committee meeting with the November Public Safety Committee meeting. So moving the October 27th FNA Committee to November 3rd and to move the November 3rd Public Safety Committee to October 27th.
Second.
Councilmember Bingle?
I just want to say how much I appreciate that we're reading this now. I think it makes it so clear. It's pre-written, pre-done. Great job.
And so I will just say, as council president, we will be consistent in suspending the rules and going because it has been back and forth today. And again, the audience nor Councilmember Katcard has that in front of them. So the rules have been suspended. All of them, all of them in favor will say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Now we're going to vote on it? Or we just did? I think we're done. All right. And the last one, the budget amendment, Mr. Wright?
Yes. We wanted to be mindful that there was a short timeframe between the time that the council receives the budget and the time for actual adoption and that amendments could be considerable in number and fast-moving. And to, in recognition of that, we wanted to make sure that there was a blanket rule that allowed council members to make amendments as late as possible. So, reading this verbatim, motion to suspend the rules to allow all proposed amendments to the budget to be considered and adopted by a simple majority vote if circulated no later than noon on the Friday prior to final consideration of the biennial budget. And second, to allow all such amendments to be adopted without deferral of the final action.
Councilmember Katcard?
Yeah, I will make the motion to suspend the rules and accommodate amendments up until noon on the Friday prior. I would add that, well, I'll leave that there and I'll add this commentary later, but that'll be my motion.
All second.
Okay, it's moved in the second to suspend the rules. Make a motion. Any other commentary from council?
If I could just make one comment?
Yes, Councilmember Katcard?
Obviously, there's a likelihood that we will adopt the budget on November 17, but in the instance that for some reason it's deferred, I just hope that we will extend this to the following Friday as well, but we can consider that at a later date.
Thank you for that, bringing it up.
Council President?
Yes.
The way the motion is stated, we anticipated the possibility that it might go to the 27th. So if you defer action to the 24th of November, this rule would still, this rule suspension would still apply. There's no need to change the motion today.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt as presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? That concludes that. Right now, I'll entertain a motion for the approval as the agenda's as modified.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the agenda as modified. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? Thank you. Please join us again at 6:00 PM this evening.